Roll call, please.
Mr. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Gangrel?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Welsh?
Here.
Here. Please stand and join us for opening prayer and pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us make the best use of our own. We are device companions here, yet we wish to reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerns. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So I need a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move we approve the agenda as printed.
I second it.
So a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Awards and proclamations. We have... We have Jerry Smith has received an award for outstanding leadership and mentorship of the N A E M T faculty in the United States and N A M T is the National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians. So congratulations. Thank you. Yeah.
Yo, we're real proud of Jerry. It just goes to show you the quality of personnel that we have, you know, not only with Jerry.
Isn't she here like every year or every six months for a new award?
Exactly.
Maybe every month it seems like.
But yeah, we're proud of Jerry and her accomplishment of this award. You know, she's N A E M T. She serves as coordinator for Region Four in the state now. And she's been a great mentor, not only to the state nationally, but to our own personnel. And we're real proud of her and want to recognize her for this.
Chief, Region Four consists what areas?
Arkansas, Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, and everything west.
Oh wow, that's huge. Wow.
Big area. Yeah, we're proud of that. So, but anyway.
And Hawaii.
So when are you gonna make a visit to Hawaii?
I've been, a couple of times actually. The N A T has sent me out there to set up some new programs. I just take vacation and go.
Take vacation?
Need a co-adviser? That sounds rough. Sounds rough.
I don't think you'd give much work down there.
That's okay. I can carry your bags. I can order food for her. I mean...
Anyway, we're proud of Jerry.
Thank you very much. This is my last job I will ever have, the Texas Fire EMT.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next, we have recognition of four visitors, four special visitors, that, well, the chief will introduce them, but they've been promoted to master police officers.
Didn't we just swear man the other day?
I think it's been a while.
Time does go fast. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come for you tonight and officially recognize individuals who've been recently promoted to master police officer. The promotion to master police officer is a very important step. That position actually acts as our training officers for our new hires. So it perpetuates what we're trying to do is select the right people and get them trained properly. So it's a very important step. Also, it's the first step towards moving on into the leadership because sergeants are selected from the ranks of master police officers. To qualify for the position, you have to have at least three years of service. So it's been at least three years since they've been here for swearing in. They also have to take a challenging written examination and then go through an oral interview board and an interview with me. Additionally, we do a thorough review of all of their work to ensure that it meets the stringent requirements we have of those who will be training our new officers. This year, we had four individuals who were tested for the master patrol officer. Officer Paul Hammond, Combs, and Mayo. Unfortunately, Officer Combs is not able to be here tonight, so he is included in that group though. I'm very pleased to say that all of them did an outstanding job. Very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. And at this time, I'd like to complete this promotional process by doing the penning of the NPO.
Can we do it Marine Corps style? Just wondering. Just don't put the backs on it. That's all I gotta say. Not worried about hurting him, was that what you said?
No.
Next two guys are built like tanks. You'd have to feel awful frisky to wanna get hands-on with those two officers.
No, they're standing there like we're gonna bite them or something.
No.
They're pretty nice, really.
Ah, they're quiet guys. Well, three of them are.
Yeah, T J is one of our ASP instructors. And I gotta tell you, when he demonstrated the technique to create intimidation with the ASP, I wanted to run away.
He's the only one that's actually broke the machine when we do our physical profile testing. He actually broke the machine. We had to have it recalibrated.
Oh my.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Don't apologize. That's excellent, gentlemen.
We didn't know about the challenge though, obviously. I think he probably would've put up a fight too.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. Is there anybody that signed up to speak about anything not on the agenda? All right, move on to consent agenda.
I'll put that on there. That was really cool.
Consent agenda. What's that?
I approve the November 20th, 2018 regular meeting minutes as written and approve a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to One K Two Three LLC.
Just for an item clarification, One K Two Three was a IRB. It is completed. They made all their payments. This is simply just a housekeeping item to get the title back and release our lien. And this is a condition of the bond documents.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move it on to old business.
Consider resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with professional engineering consultants, P A Wichita, for professional civil, structural, mechanical, and electrical engineering design services for water well number fifteen for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Good evening. After the November sixth commission meeting, we went back to P E C and requested an agreement for the new well number fifteen. We then compared their agreement for well number eight, now well number fourteen, which was approved by the city commission on August eighteen, twenty fifteen. The results are included in the package. Agreement for the new well states P E C will use the base well design previously developed by them for well at number eight, now well fourteen. The cost is thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars less than well eight, now well number fourteen. A S M's agreement that was presented at the November sixth commission meeting was two thousand higher than P E C. So staff now recommends P E C for the design services.
I think we had a question about the wellhouse.
Right.
And was, did they, that, this now includes the wellhouse in that?
The wellhouse design.
The wellhouse design is already completed. So basically what you're approving is for all those services that are outside of just the wellhouse. And those are listed one through six on the email that was sent to Andrew. And I believe it's on page twenty-five of the packet. But what it says is verify well pump remitters and well design by Lane Christensen. Locate specific design for well, including waterline sizing and alignment. Determine floodplain boundaries and FEMA permit requirements. Prepare permits for D W R and K D H E and prepare plans and specs and submit silk plans for K D H E for approval. So those are all the items. And then it's broken down further showing that the structural design's only twelve hundred, the mechanical's only twelve hundred. The electrical is thirty-six hundred. And then the actual civil work is eighteen thousand five hundred for a total of twenty-four thousand five hundred. If we were to have another design of the wellhouse, we would've seen that range of fifty-six thousand again is what the cost would've been.
So any new, we've got several wells we're gonna drill, so rest of wells will be in that twenty-four thousand dollar range.
That's correct. Should be in that, that range.
The only difference is if other wells we add, we add a standby generator to it. In this case, we added what the existing well we have now, the new one. This one will just run a cable over to it.
We have the initial one with the generator, so our design has the generator pad included in the design work. So with having two models now, you're still gonna see some electrical costs, but I think your civil cost is gonna start to come down as well. So I think the next time we do it, we'll probably be under twenty thousand, would be my guess.
Well, how many more wells have we got to drill out there? Five or six more eventually?
We'll eventually need to do all of them. Need to re-drill all of them and potentially add.
Will every one of them have its own generator or?
No, we'll probably only have two on the south end and two on the north.
Okay, then we'll piggyback with this.
And then they'll just be back to regular.
Okay. When is the expected date to start this, when we approve, if we approve it?
They'll start immediately. But as far as like digging and everything, I think they're just, I think Lane Christensen, we've already approved that portion. So they're just waiting on the design. So they can go ahead and get where it's gonna be sited and go from there.
And this was in our budget for twenty-eighteen?
Correct.
I so move, let me get back here to work. That we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with professional engineering consultants, P A Wichita, for professional civil, structural, mechanical, and electrical engineering design services for water well number fifteen for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. And so the other bid we had?
The other one was two thousand higher, twenty-six thousand.
And they were gonna do the entire thing?
No, no, they were gonna use the existing wellhouse design work that P E C had completed.
Um, what? Go ahead.
All right, so even with it designed, it's still twenty-four thousand per?
That's correct because of all the ancillary costs outside of just the structure of the wellhouse.
Well, a lot of the cost is permitting, permits and all that stuff.
Permitting and the siding, yes.
Didn't you, before I got on the commission, didn't you guys pass a thing and paid fifty-some a thousand?
It was fifty-six thousand dollars.
So that it would never have to be done again, right?
Well, the fifty-six thousand was for that one. And in that, they stated that the design for the wellhouse can be used for this one in this case. That's why there's a lower amount.
Because the design's completed for the wellhouse, but there's still the ancillary costs for all the other work that needs to be completed. So that's, that's why you still see a savings of thirty-some thousand.
Thirty-one thousand five hundred less than one fifty-six thousand.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, new business.
Consider a resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing at five-thirty P M on December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen to amend the two thousand and eighteen budget of the city.
Uh, this is just a housekeeping item. We actually received more loan proceeds and had a little bit more expenditures for twenty-eighteen due to the construction of a water treatment plant. So this is just adjusting that up to reflect those expenditures. And so just move one million dollars.
All right, I move we can, we authorize a resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing at five-thirty on December eighteenth to amend the twenty-eighteen budget for the city of Arkansas City.
Second.
So that's the same date as our regular meeting. So, no big deal. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Number two.
Consider first reading of an ordinance adopting the pay plan for two thousand and nineteen with one point five percent toll on repealing ordinance two thousand seventeen, twelve, four, 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 seven. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, it's that time of year again to go over the pay ordinance and the pay plan for the next year. This is a two thousand and nineteen pay plan. It does include a one point five percent cost of living adjustment. We had budgeted for two percent, but the other half percent, we decided not to use it across the board, but to look at the League of Kansas Municipalities Wage Survey and do some comparisons and try to bring some wages to where they need to be on our pay ordinance. We found that some wages were maybe a little bit low. We wanted to be competitive. So we reviewed that survey and made some suggested changes to the pay ordinance with that additional half percent. There are several on here. I didn't know if you had any specific questions about the changes that we're making, but we're doing some things like maintenance workers ones, twos, and threes, bringing some supervisors to where they need to be after reviewing the survey. And this is just, again, kind of housekeeping for the new, the new year.
With the, with the changes, it stays under the two percent even with the?
Yes.
Yes. And that was kind of what we talked about previously at the budget meetings, try to make adjustments in those areas. We really need to make adjustments. You know, some of the most notable ones that I think that we definitely need to make was I T manager. Bumping them up a couple ranges because we did find we're significantly lower than quite a few others in the level of expertise that Mr. Metzinger brings to our organization is... If he was not here, we would be lost because he has his hands really in everything and he's a tremendous asset for us here at the city. Also, we looked at one, twos, and threes, and we made that decision based upon making different levels for expertise basically within those fields. So where a distribution collection maintenance worker, one, two, and three, will have different levels of licensing. So as they get their potential class four license, they will be eligible potentially up for a three. Ones are basically very entry-level individuals that will just be basic laborers. And so that will actually open us up and they won't be required to have a C D L. Currently, everyone that works for us is required to have C D L, but we're wanting to make it more reflective of what we can receive from the public because that's been one of our biggest points that's holding us back and filling a lot of these positions is we have a lot of individuals that just can't get the C D L. Either for driving history or just don't have the skill set. Because the C D L is so much more difficult than what it was five, six years ago to obtain. So it's, the test is just brutal. And we have very highly, highly intelligent individuals that end up having to take tests two or three times. And it just, you would never have guessed that.
Well, it is the first reading, but I move we adopt an ordinance. Yeah. I move, I move that we pass an ordinance adopting the pay plan for two thousand and nineteen with a one point five percent cost of living adjustment and repealing ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twelve dash four, 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 seven.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, it's a roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gangrel?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Yes.
I'd like to thank you all and the other day employees.
Thank you for your hard work. Number three.
Consider resolution authorizing the city to enter into professional servicing agreement with Ed M. Iverson, Jr. for municipal judge services.
Tamara and I have been working on this for several months. We went, Tamara actually compiled information from all the comparable communities in regards to judges' salaries and contracts and how they were set up and made the determination that we were kind of an outlier. And so we did have those discussions with N M since his contract was up for renewal to look at compensation rate for his position. And also given that he is just wanting to do it on a year-to-year basis to see how he still enjoys it, we figured that we would change the agreement basically to year-to-year, but with a ninety-day out period for either party. And his compensation would be reduced basically to about forty-four thousand dollars a year from where it was. So it's a reduction, I believe a twenty-two percent reduction.
Twenty-two percent.
Which gets us back to right where we're comparable with other municipal court judges with the same caseload, size, jurisdiction.
Need a motion?
I move that we authorize the city of Arkansas City to enter into the professional services agreement with N M Iverson, Jr. for municipal judge services.
Second that.
So a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments, Commissioner? Seeing none, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Number four.
Consider a resolution amending resolution number two thousand eleven dash twelve dash two seven four six to alter the schedule of city commission reorganization meetings and provide for the automatic rescheduling of any regular city commission meeting that will fall on a city-designated holiday.
Just a real quick refresher. This is the final adjustment that we've been going through for the last two years in reaction to the state law change to move our elections to November. So of course, in two thousand and fifteen, that bill passed. And we've been adjusting everything from calendar to terms and mayorships ever since. We passed charter ordinance number twenty-nine back in two thousand and sixteen, which reaffirmed our commission manager former government. Of course, Vice Mayor Warren was reelected, but his term was extended. And Mayor Kovach and Commissioner Eastman also had their terms extended by an additional four months. And we had to move our first meeting this year to a Monday in compliance with state law, which requires that new commissioners be sworn in on the second Monday of the month. So we both rather than have to do a resolution every other year to reschedule that meeting, that we just go ahead and amend our standing resolution, which designates the meetings as being on the first and third Tuesdays. And instead, we will have a reorganization meeting on the first Monday of the even numbered years. We also threw in this resolution that, we have a holiday coming up, obviously January first is Tuesday, that we would have on back rescheduling provisions so that if we have that happen again and that fourth of July is really the only other one that's occurred, but I threw in there other city holidays should we designate a floating holiday, that it'd also be moved to the following Monday, just so we have the same pattern. Now, you could still do something different if a holiday came up. You would just have to pass a special resolution, which is what we have to do already anyway. But this would provide staff with some advance notice on things that we know are coming anyway, which are city holidays. And just, it helps us better with our planning process with the packet and everything. So if you do a purpose resolution, then our currently scheduled January first meeting will move to Monday, January eighth. The reason that we thought that this would be the best procedure, in the past when we've rescheduled meetings, you know, this is the following Tuesday, sometimes that disrupts the planning commission. They set hearings long in advance and then we have to scramble to find a different room. That can be kind of a pain, but really the driving force in my thinking was just with, as long as the commissioner is continuing, also serves the hospital board of trustees. I know we had one time recently where we ended up with their meeting getting moved to a Monday. It was kind of confusing. This eliminates that. It just doesn't create a problem in that regard. And you wouldn't think that extra day from a Monday to a Tuesday makes a difference, but it actually can when you have back-to-back weeks. We work almost a week out sometimes on packets. So having that additional day to do minutes of the meeting that just happened could be beneficial to us. And it just makes things regular. We know going into each year what it's gonna look like. We don't have to come back for a resolution every time. If you were to approve it, these are the meetings upcoming that'll be changing, the next two Januaries, next year because of the holiday, the year following because of the election. I did not include on here January fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. The way the resolution's currently worded, it would not be automatically rescheduled, but if you wanted to keep things consistent year-to-year, you could, we could easily amend that and just say every first meeting in January is on the second Monday. But three of the next two are going to be moved to Mondays. And additionally, July fourth next occurs on a Tuesday in two thousand and twenty-three. Beyond that, I think it's another fifteen years. So this is not a frequent occurrence. It's just something we wanted to catch everything now and not have to go back and amend later. But as I said, you still have the flexibility to pass a resolution to go to a day other than a Monday in any instance that you wish, except for of course, when complying with state law for the swearing-in of commissioners. You can always amend this again. It's just a resolution, not an ordinance. And as I mentioned, if you want to use the direction, we can just make it always the second Monday in January. But it's not currently written that way. Do you have any questions? One complicated resolution for a very simple change. I want to make sure we catch everything.
Well, I was gonna mention that you mentioned South Central Kansas Board of Trustees. I think we kind of discussed maybe eliminating the meeting on a Tuesday, five-thirty P M.
I had heard discussion of that, but I wasn't, I checked.
We hadn't decided, but I think it'd probably be brought up.
At the time that decision had been made, but like I said, the planning commission still can be a conflict. Sometimes he sets hearings like two months in advance, so, you know, that's fine though. If that is not a compelling reason, then I understand.
Why move that we adopt a resolution amending resolution number two thousand eleven dash twelve dash two seven four six to alter the schedule of city commission reorganization meetings and provide the automatic rescheduling of any city commission meeting that would fall on a city-designated holiday?
I'll second that.
So a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. We have rescheduled our meetings. Mark your calendars.
For two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, number five.
Number five, there will be two ordinances for this item that is regarding Camp Act taxable IRBs. So the first one is consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, series two thousand and eighteen A Camp Act LLC, for the purpose of acquisition, construction of a commercial warehouse and distribution facility, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection with it.
And I believe Sarah Steele's here with us today. If the commission has any questions in regards to the IRB process or to the documents themselves. Tamara has reviewed them. There are some items that will need to be finalized, I believe, between the city and Camp Act. But in general, everything looks ready to go and.
Yeah, what's, what's those items consistent?
So we, we've reviewed the documents several times after, of course, every time an attorney reads a document, I think they have to make a change. And so the, the, no offense, I, I'm also an attorney, so. I'm also an attorney, so uh, and so in the last draft that we got on Friday, there was a reference that said our agreement would be subject to uh and subordinate to a loan agreement uh between Commerce Bank and um the other parties to the to the IRBs. So uh, and I haven't seen those those loan documents, um, and I've requested them, but haven't received them yet. So uh, if we do approve it tonight, um, which other than that, the documents look very standard. Um, so if we approve it tonight, I would request that you approve it contingent upon my review and approval of those loan documents. I don't anticipate there's going to be an issue, but we need to make sure we do our due diligence and review those.
I might, I I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore Bell. We're bond counsel to the city, and I might just elaborate on that as well, that the structure of the transaction is that on this piece of of the industrial revenue bonds, a real estate entity has built the building, is leasing to Can Pack, and they did enter into loan documents with Commerce Bank, I guess, almost a year ago in order to construct the building. The bonds are actually being purchased by that same entity, which Wichita Warehouse Realty is buying the bonds, as well as the being the obligor. So they're on both sides of the transaction, and the act of making the bonds subordinate to their pre-existing loan is an accommodation to them. Um, gotta give the bank priority on on their loan, but on the industrial revenue bond side, you, the city is issuing the bonds. The bonds are being paid solely from any lease payments from Wichita Warehouse Realty, but they're paying themselves. So they've they've asked that, you know, we make sure that everything that we're doing here is subordinate to their pre-existing loan with Commerce. And we will, I've requested the documents as well to um be sent to Ms. Niles, and so we'll have a chance to to take a look at those. But that's why um there is that provision in the bond documents, is their attorney for the bank wanted to make sure that it was clear that the bank has priority. And Wichita Warehouse Realty is paying the bank. And on the bond side of things, they really are, um, it's it's a paper transaction that's being done in order to satisfy state law on property tax exemption. They also received a sales tax exemption on the materials that went into construction. So so that's kind of an ex- kind of a long-winded explanation of why there is a subordinate provision in that in that lease that was added by the lawyer for Commerce Bank.
Is these ten-year bonds or?
They will be ten years to coincide with the property tax exemption. That's correct.
Yeah. 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 Okay.
And I might also add Craig Miller from Can Packs here, if you do have any questions on the project as well. So this piece deals strictly with the real estate and the building. The next ordinance that you'll be asked to consider is strictly to cover some equipment that was purchased by Can Pack. Can Pack is buying those bonds, so that's why we have to divide it up.
Well, I make a motion, we consider the resolution amending resolution number two oh one one days, one two days, two seven four six to alter the schedule. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one. Yeah, sorry. I make a motion, we consider the first reading ordinance authorizing the city of Arkansas City to issue its taxable revenue bonds, series two thousand and eighteen dash A Can Pack LLC for the purpose of acquisition, construction of commercial warehouse, and distribution facility, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Subject to final council approval?
Subject to final council approval. Thank you.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second with one addition to the subject to final council approval. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gangre?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mary Kovach?
Yes. Alright, letter B.
Consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, series two thousand and eighteen B Can Pack LLC for the purpose of furnishing and equipping commercial warehouse and distribution facility and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Is that the same, you want the same ending with?
Yes.
Council approval?
Yes.
So here the difference is this is, these are.
This is for the equipment.
But inside.
Can Pack's equipment.
And they're gonna, they're gonna find themselves.
First one is Wichita Warehousing.
Okay.
Warehouse.
The fakes not involved, that provision is not in this lease.
Okay.
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 So it's fine, it's fine, it's entirely.
The documents are fine as is.
Yes, as long as it doesn't, I I reviewed a lot of documents today. It was quite a few pages, as you could tell from your your packet.
Yeah.
Um, so as long as it doesn't contain the provision referring to the loan documents that I haven't seen yet, then it doesn't need to be subject to my approval.
Well, I'll make a motion, I'll read the right one this time, uh, to consider first reading ordinance authorizing the city of Arkansas City, Kansas to issue a taxable industrial revenue bond, series two thousand and eighteen dash B Can Pack LLC for the purpose of furnishing, equipping, and commercial warehouse, and distribution facility, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Second.
So in this case, it also goes along that there may re- that there's the, these are being done in order to get the tax exemptions. So is Can Pack the borrower and the lender?
They are the borrower and the lender on these bonds as well.
Same thing.
These are done solely for purposes of verifying the sales tax exemption
Sure.
that was used on the purchases. The machinery and equipment is exempt pursuant to Kansas statute, beginning in two thousand and six. And so they don't need the property tax exemption. It's strictly for sales tax exemption.
Alright, so we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions from the commission? Alright, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gangre?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mary Hope?
Yes. Alright, motion carries. Alright, number six. Thank, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Consider a resolution adopting by reference the city's two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution number two thousand and thirteen dash zero four dash two eight two.
Uh, we met on this on Friday. I was just wondering if the commission has any questions.
There's a lot to read.
There's a lot in there.
Um.
Some of the major items with some uh.
As I say, the new one, we have the the water rates.
Correct.
Got. Well, I didn't uh review it here since the one in the packet compared to the one we had, but there was the one section of the water rates that the table was slid over one column.
Yes, I believe she has those fixed. I believe Kathy's fixed them in the updated packet that's that's in.
But that's not in our packet. It was just the original.
Mm-hmm.
When uh, we were talking about the special events, a, the permit fee, that was the for the.
Yes.
Ag bill, building. Excuse me.
Well, this is actually something that we will um propose, which is a new permit for special events to close city streets and city parks um to the public for a private event. And the reason it came about is because um we were getting calls at the last minute, for example, that someone wants to close Summit for a race, or um close a city park for an event. And we would have a very short period of time uh to to get the, all the staff there, get everything that they needed there. So what we would, will be proposing is um a new permit um to close these things, to give the city sufficient notice of the um event, and then to give us time to get everything to them. So none of these fees will actually go into effect unless and until um, or at least the permit fee won't go into effect unless and until you do approve an ordinance that authorizes the permit.
Well, I was, I was concerned about the uh barricades, cause uh I had a call, you had barricades for the trunk of tree that night. I know what I called. Is is that gonna be charged to churches or who's don, non-for-profit, or how's that gonna be set up?
Uh, it it depends. The w- the way we are proposing the ordinance is that any city um sponsored events will be exempt, um, as well as um. Well, it'd just be city sponsored events that we're proposing. Um, uh, and um, uh, National Night Out. I mean, that that's a city sponsored event, so no one would have to pay for that.
That's, mm-hmm.
Um, but really, it takes city staff time to to get things and to put them out. And so we we really just, on these costs, tried to calculate really staff time that it takes for us to get it, put it out, go back, pick it up.
Yeah. I thought uh, I thought you said any nonprofit could come here, request the fees to be dropped to the commission.
That's correct.
And that's something that we can talk about with the uh ordinance too regarding the special events.
So the ordinance isn't prepared yet.
It's prepared, we just haven't.
Well, I mean, we haven't, yeah.
Right, so these, because we're adopting this annually, we wanted to go ahead and include it, um, so that next time, that the next meeting when we bring this ordinance, we don't have to adopt a whole new comprehensive fee schedule.
Well, you know, I'm not trying to, like, we we don't have any place to do, but the other churches have parking lots, they can do it. So I was just kind of wondering, you know.
How many sets of barricades did something like that take?
Two.
Maybe fifty dollars.
That'd be one set, wouldn't it? Cause you just need one on each end.
That's, that's two.
It's two sets.
That's one set, sets two.
So.
Mm-hmm, a set is two.
Sets two.
Yeah, a set is two, yeah, so.
Won't it be enough to block off a street?
I guess when they said.
Throw by.
So it'd be, so it'd be fifty dollars for, for s- for a, or another church, if they want to do that. I just kind of wondering, where they could come to the commission, you know, and.
The thing is too, we can take section Q out for now, and we can discuss that at a later time. We really can. It doesn't make difference. We can add it later if, that way just not confusing and until we get it up at the other parking.
But I just, you know.
So I would just, on, just recommend move section Q um uh from the draft.
Oh, thank you.
We are looking at the stormwater fees. Kathy and I have already started uh, um, making inquiries on what some other communities are doing. And then we're gonna work on getting our costs together of what we anticipate as gonna be major expenditures um in the upcoming years. So we're working on that.
You mean for the, for our di- I mean, the takeover of the.
Yeah, for the storm, uh, the stormwater fees. So we'll bring that to the commission at a later time, but um, the fees will remain the same for the time being.
Yeah. We were talking about uh, the the di maintenance or something like that, well.
Like, do the capital maintenance?
So. Yeah.
Portion of it, yeah.
Yeah. Instead of stormwater, make it clearer for the public to.
Better understand.
Yes.
I didn't understand this, Tamara, about the possession.
Of marijuana?
Uh, is that now just municipal? It's when you don't go to district?
Uh, you do on, well, you can go to district on first or second offenses too, because we have concurrent jurisdiction. Um, but now third offense is a felony, if it's small amounts, uh, other, if it's possession with intent to sell, and that goes up to district because that's felony level. Um, so state law was amended um to allow us to prosecute first and second offenses. Um, so we we do that now. Um, and we had adopted municipal code authorizing us to prosecute a municipal co- municipal court before the Uniform Public Offense Code was amended. Um, so when it was amended, then we took it out of our code. We're just following Uniform Public Offense Code now for first and second. Is that, did that answer your question?
Very well, thank you.
Okay.
Then I have a question about the parks and facilities rental back for the agribusiness building.
Yes.
So the uh and we talked about that some, the tennis association?
Yes.
Six hours per court, and they are responsible for telling us how many courts they use?
That's correct. They'll send us a report then with the month.
And they have no other, that's their only fee?
That, and they also every, once every eight years, they will redo the court. It'll be put in the, into their rotation. And they're still responsible for maintenance of the um, the tennis nets, uh, et cetera.
I was wondering how we, I wasn't remembering for sure how we worked that out, cause there was varying things said at our meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they have a contract yet.
We're working on that. I gave Tamara some notes and we'll get that finalized.
And they, so and they charge six dollars per court and they just.
They're gonna charge, I believe. They they can, they will reimburse us six. They can charge whatever they want.
Whatever they want. They can charge. Six, so. And so that, and that's not open to the public for six dollars a court, even though it's in the fee schedule?
Correct. I believe that they will charge, um, well, I actually have to go back, and I think it's ten dollars if you are not a member of the tennis association.
They'll charge a different, well, whatever they want to charge.
Yes.
They're, they'll control.
But that's for, that's.
But what I'm saying, if they, if you were not a member of the tennis, that doesn't apply. So somebody can't just come and say, I wanna come to city hall and say, I wanna play tennis, can I pay my six dollars?
Correct. That, that's correct. That's correct.
I'll have to go through the tennis association.
They have to go through the tennis, yeah. That's why, so we're not.
It's a forty dollar fee, I believe, to belong to the association.
But we're not gonna be in charge of making sure that's.
No, we are not.
We're just, whenever they do it, they pay us six dollars.
Yeah, Aaron O'Donnell will be responsible for for that.
Now, if you were part of the tennis association and you wanted to have a birthday party just in that court, could you do that?
No. Gosh, I hope not.
I'm just using this for.
I understand.
Cause other than that, I mean, it'd be two hundred dollars, you know, it's only six dollars if they. But I'd have to join the tennis association.
Someone was telling me that uh, the old uh, building south of town that was owned by Sparks, that it was like eleven hundred dollars a weekend to rent that facility. And I was like, wow.
The Moose?
Yeah.
The Moose.
Well, then we're a good value.
Yeah, we are a good value. It's a very large space.
So, I just wanna make sure I was clear on that, to see how that works, so. Okay, and other than that, any other questions? Or do you need a motion or? To.
So we're taking out Q, right?
That's correct, our special events.
Depends on the motion.
Special events Q, have you just revoked that out of motions?
Yeah. Stay more, stay there a little more.
I move that we accept the city of Arkansas City's comprehensive fee schedule.
I'm moving in part Q.
In part excluding part Q.
Q.
Alright, we have a motion. Yes.
Well, I'll second it.
So a motion and a second, any other discussion? So, once we, we have an ordinance that does provide a permit process for special events, we'll have to come back and.
We'll put that as part of the ordinance. We'll, we'll actually have a resolution then that coincides with the ordinance to establish those fees for the special event.
Okay, so I really don't have a problem with Q. We already will remove it, we'll put it in then later, right?
Yes, it's not.
That's right, I didn't know if we'd have to come back and redo all this, we're just gonna put that section, okay.
No, just that portion. Yep, that's just that specific section.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution twenty thirteen oh four, or no, not to repeal that. We have a motion and a second to adopt a Resolution twenty thirteen oh four, or no, not to repeal that, no, to adopt this resolution, so, um, any other discussion?
Now, this, we'll have to come back next year for the same, will, will this be an annual thing on these fees and stuff?
That's a kind of what we anticipated when we first created this document, is once a year we would update it. But we do update it as needed. If, if we need to add something in or change something.
So when's the last time we updated this one? Comprehensive, I believe, is two thousand and thirteen.
Was two thousand and thirteen was the original, and then we made changes along the way up until this one,
This one?
and then we're adopting the entire by reference.
Okay.
At least that's.
And then we'll, then she'll have resolutions that change just portions of it.
Section.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Uh, it's a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our city manager updates.
Okay, we also visited, um, uh, well, Employee Christmas Party, uh, is going to be this Friday. Starts at five thirty, we'll eat at six thirty, probably be over by seven thirty. Um, Cali County Legislative Committee meeting, when is that?
Noon next Tuesday.
Noon next Tuesday in Winfield?
We're gonna go to probably more quarterly schedule next year.
Yep, and then we talked about special events permit, but then the big item really is the Westar franchise agreement, which we touched on, uh, on Friday. Uh, had some further communication with Westar, uh, this afternoon. Asked about, um, length of term. Uh, they sent an email saying that they, um, are requiring a twenty-year, um, franchise agreement. And, um, so I did a little bit more checking, and which, city Wichita did do a twenty-year agreement when they renewed theirs, um, when they went to five to six percent. And I found, uh, talked a little bit about Derby. Derby earmarked their increase from five to six percent solely for their water park. So their increase in franchise fees goes directly to support their water park, um, and their fund for the ongoing maintenance. Uh, if the commission so wishes to, um, increase it, uh, we need to let them know as soon as possible. Uh, and if we do, I strongly recommend, contrary to what I, uh, proposed on Friday, I think we should just keep it at a, go from five to six, and make it where that one percent increase goes, uh, directly to street improvement fund. And so it'd be used only for street projects, uh, in the city of Ark City.
Would that include the street lights?
It would not. Street lights, we'll find other avenues for the street lights. Um, well, this is talking for mill and overlay projects, potentially sidewalks in these residential areas as well.
And what was your estimate for that?
Term care. Um, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, but we talked about as rates increase, that will, uh, that amount will increase every year as well. Or it could decrease depending upon the structure of the payers. Uh, the average, uh, household would probably see about a dollar fifty to two dollars per month increase, uh, if it is changed from five to six, five to six percent.
And don't be, I was gonna say, that would only be your Westar bill, not the other utilities.
Correct. It's, this only affects Westar. Kansas gas is up in two years, I, I believe. I did a little. I did a little figuring on what they showed, and, uh, it went up from, let's see. About a dollar a month at the low rate, and a dollar thirty-four for the summer rate, what the summary they gave us.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, these rates, it's about what I pay, which is the large house. That's an extra fourteen dollars a year. And, uh, I was also thinking about the streets, and I, when I saw this, I thought, we did talk about it, but I'm glad you brought this up, 'cause we do need something for streets. There's a lot of streets that we need to work in this. Well, the project I wanna target specifically, and I'll, and if approved, we're gonna look at it immediately, is going to be the summer street from, uh, Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane, and doing a major improvement to that corridor. When you look at the users and, and the flow, you know, we talked about having fourteen to sixteen thousand vehicles, or was it seventeen thousand, chief? How many vehicles a day on Door Summit between Kansas? Was it six? Just under seventeen thousand vehicles a day. So just about every citizen in Ark City at some point is traversing that section of roadway. And we have quite a few of our businesses and, and, um, payers that utilize those, that area. So I think it'd be a good utilization fund. Plus, it'd actually open up where we can then do north of Radio Lane and continue on to the city limits as well. Uh, but that would be designated by the commission, the utilization, but the, that excess would actually go just straight into the street improvement fund. And would not go into the general fund. I, I think that's a good place to put it, 'cause we need, we don't have any funding for city streets.
We need a resource for that funding.
Yeah.
What resource is, is in that funding right now? Other, I know that sales tax went?
Uh, we get gas tax, um, goes into that fund, yes.
Gas goes. And how much is that a year?
I don't know what it is. I've seen it. So three hundred and eleven thousand, does that sound right? Is it more than that? Five hundred and, let's see, current year estimate says three hundred and thirty thousand for Kansas gas tax, three twenty-five, eight sixty. And then county transfer gas is at forty-nine thousand.
So all that goes in the?
In the special highway fund is where that goes. And then we would designate these funds to be in the special highway fund as well.
So they're charging next year.
Would that be with, with the funds we're getting right now?
Um, Jennifer, can you help me? What would that then make those, with a hundred and seventy thousand on top of it? Minus our expenses, of course. That'd make about half a million dollars, correct, wouldn't you say? Okay, with the special highway funds that we get from the state of Kansas, plus the revenue, potential revenue from the increase of one percent, what would be the total resources available? Okay, okay.
A year for a rose.
Correct. Okay.
Well, either way, it'll have to be on our next agenda.
Yep.
Correct. So do you want me to put the agreement at six percent for the time being?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And then you can discuss, and we'll have to approve of that if you, because it has to be completed by January one, with at least a week prior notice, um, with Westar. Unless you wanna do a special meeting?
No.
Okay.
We will, we will hammer it out and get it figured out. I'm not sure how I feel about it, but if I, I could vote no or make my own motion.
Okay. We will bring it for an action item on the eighteenth. Okay. Other than that? It's this. It's this thing. Okay. So will all of you be there Friday?
Yes.
No.
Barring some emergency.
Yes.
You better be there, you got the food. You got the meat.
Yeah.
Barring some strange things.
I'll let you know.
Okay, sounds great. Uh, well, it's, it's a fun time. Uh, you'll get to see the improvements to the Ag Building. They are, with the exception of the floor, complete. And it is a, um, it is a very, very nice building. We'll do some sort of event, you know, with either chamber coffee or something after the first of the year, once we get the floors done, because it's technically not done until we get the floors done. Um, but our portion is pretty much complete.
I hear with that LAD lighting set, it looks like it's about one and a half times bigger than what it is.
Mm-hmm. Well, we moved the piping that used to run down the center of it, which made it look lower. Um, and it's just, it's so much brighter and cleaner in there now. It's, it's, it's nice. The Tony's Cruise did an amazing job. Um, when we first had it looked at and we received a bid, the bid was around ninety thousand dollars to do the work, and it, they were estimating three months. Tony's Cruise did it in one month.
That's Tony?
That's amazing.
I mean, so that just shows you how efficient they are. I mean, it's, they're pretty impressive.
Jason's watching.
Pretty impressive. It really was. I mean, I'm, and, and they took a lot of pride in their work. Every single one of those gentlemen did. It was amazing.
Lifey.
But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.